We always really appreciate how you slide right in. Okay, let's get this show on the road. Meeting has called order six thirty PM. Roll call shows that council is present. Everyone's here. This is the time when we open the open forum. So if you are not on the agenda or would like to address the council, now is the time to do so. Anyone care to do that? Take it that everybody's on the agenda? Fantastic, all right. Close the open forum and move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda is populated by the usual three things. Is there anything you would like to pull for consideration? Or is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Well, I think, I have one thing for the minutes that I would like to suggest. In the report of the library budget, there's a section of it that says, let's see if I can find exactly what it is. Where it says that. It's in the first line, it says the library had asked for large increases in the 2016-17 budgets. I think it would probably serve better just to put what the percentages are in those for those respective years. It just makes things a little clearer. So apart from that, anything you'd like to consider for the consent agenda? Or is there a motion to approve?
So moved as amended.
Okay, moved as amended. Is there a second?
A second.
Movement and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carrie's. All right, we're going to move on to the planning commission report. So the first thing on the planning commission report is the Nordic Star final plat. So you guys can come up if you'd like. We've got two microphones for you, so space yourselves accordingly. And then we can discuss. So as we briefly discussed at the last meeting, the planning commission had a few additional criteria that were asked of the, you know, of the final plat. And it sounds like you guys have acknowledged those things and are ready to move forward. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. So take it away, I guess. I guess I don't know who leads us now.
So the two documents that were requested was the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency stormwater plan, the permit, which we have received.
Yep.
And we also were requested to add language into our road declaration and easements, including language for the stormwater maintenance plan, which has been done by buyers. So I have a copy of that document if anybody is interested.
I have copies of the stormwater permit, the coverage card as well.
Yeah, we got emailed that.
You did get sent out.
Yep, so we've got that stuff in hand, so, or at least have seen it. Yeah, so I've been...
So would you like more information on the project as to where we're at?
It'd be nice to have an update about how things are going.
Things are going amazingly well. We've received our wetlands permit, this permit, the stormwater permit. We at One Roof had made a decision that we had been working with Ideal Homes on this project and purchasing dynamic homes through Ideal. When we started getting real numbers in, the first number came in at over $225,000 over budget.
Oh, wow.
So we quickly determined internally that we needed to come up with a new plan. So since then, we have in fact become a dealer for modular homes through Hallmark Homes in Redwood Falls. We have, their numbers came in amazingly well, so we're very happy with that. We have already ordered the first four homes. And because of the cost savings, we are no longer going to do any two-bedroom homes. They will all be three-bedroom homes. We feel it's better for the community, better for resale values, families, et cetera.
It's probably better for the, better for the development of the homes too, because then they're all the same.
Yes, all of those homes will be three-bedroom, which is very exciting for us. You know, we took a look at the numbers and it just makes sense. So we're hoping that works well with the community. The first level of those homes are already on the line. They will be completed by mid-September. Hallmark Homes will be transporting the homes, hiring the crane, doing the setup for us. I've already received, we are becoming the general contractor on the project. We've received two bids for the excavating and site work. So we have already determined and have hired our site. Thorson will be doing our site work. So I just met with them today. Bids have gone out to a number of local contractors for plumbing, electrical, HVAC, and foundation work. We've already been in communication with a few of them. And Greg at Thorson, Greg and Steve are going to help us out with some more bidding on that as well. But I do have bid packets available, so I left some with them as well today. So we are definitely going to be in the ground September. We have also, I will be meeting with Tim McGrath tomorrow morning, who's a local builder contractor. We are going to be hiring him as our eyes on the ground, so to say, up in Grand Marais. So if there's any issues that come up, since we're two hours away, if there's any issues, he'll be onsite there to help us out. So we are very excited and very grateful for everybody's support. And we look forward to breaking ground in September.
Cool. Exciting.
I can also share that we're in the middle of raising money for phase two. And as soon as we finalize all of these plans for phase one, then we're going to start working on phase two and hope to be ordering houses this winter.
Well, phase one, I mean, what you say phase one, like, we're approving the final plat, which is for all seven.
Correct.
And the plans and stormwater plans and permit is for the whole thing.
For the whole thing.
Yeah.
Phase one is four houses.
Right, I'm aware of that. I just wanted to make sure that we were clear that what we're approving here is for the whole development, not just the first four.
Correct.
So...
Tom DeMery, I'm with Northern Consulting Engineers, working with One Roof as their site and their civil engineer. At the planning commission, requested a couple of other items on top of the permit and declaration of easement, the maintenance obligation. We were also requested a couple of items. One was, we were asked to add an extra hydrant on the, where the road turned at ninety degrees. So that's been addressed, added an extra hydrant. And we also added stabilization of riprap at the bottom of where the east side of the road, where a fair amount of the runoff is, will be turning to enter the culvert. So we stabilized that with riprap rather than just a grass swale slope. So that was also addressed in our plans as well, so.
Okay.
And just to kind of point out, when the planning commission held the public hearing, a number of neighbors were present. And one of the big concerns that was raised was the issue of stormwater runoff and potential impacts to properties to the south of Second Street. And I think that with the consideration of the stormwater permit and the maintenance of those provisions in their plan, which they now included in their covenants or their road covenants, that they'll be managing to maintain those as their responsibility. That's been addressed. And that the stormwater permit has been obtained. The planning commission was concerned about that. And I think still maintains a level of concern that, you know, we need to be aware of as the project, you know, goes along to continue to monitor how the properties on the south side of Second Street might be impacted.
Yeah, I think that we have to figure out how exactly we want to monitor that. Because, I mean, it could just be, you know, talking to the neighbors or just telling the neighbors to let us know if they notice anything negative.
I believe they'll tell us. I mean, I think they're pretty clear that they are going to be watching what's going on up above. And, you know, if they see negative impacts to their property, I think they'll certainly let us be aware of that.
Super.
Do you think that, well, that's kind of outside of this. But do you think that there's the necessity for the continuation as projects like this kind of happen? That it's an isolated picture to try and manage water in a specific plat or, you know, amount of surface area and directing it away from that property? But there is, is there a, I mean, there is no stormwater management plan for the city of Grand Marais. Is there?
We're kind of working on, and we're working on updating it. We're working on finding funding to update it with the plan, Cook County Soil and Water. But you're right.
I mean, that's all I see is it's a, I mean, that's a lot of, that's a lot for them. Because what, you know, they can manage what they have on their property that's coming. But what happens if there's development above that all of a sudden changes? I mean, that's a lot of, I mean, and I just think that that's a, I think, I feel like, even back when the former county engineer was here, talking about adding culverts on seven, that's going to dump water now onto property up on County Road, on the south side of County Road seven. You know, I mean, there, I don't know, that's all, that's my only comment. I think it's great that the work that you guys have, you know, looked at the requests to address issues, the concerns the neighbors have had. And just also just things as you've looked at the topography and potential runoff issues. But I think that we should, in the comprehensive planning and the things we're doing, especially on that west side of town, you know, from Fifth over, you have the big ditch that keeps, Fifth West over, I mean, that big ditch keeps town dry, right? But there is nothing...
Well, you know, where's our biggest problem? Right across the street. The...
Well, yeah, no, absolutely.
The plan that we have, the stormwater plans from 2001, so it's certainly, it's ready to be redone. You'll probably be seeing a draft request for proposals at your next meeting that's actually looking at that very issue.
Right.
A typical strategy for a development is to design it in a way that the rate of runoff is not increased by the development activities. So that's what the calculations that they've done aim to do. There's going to be, you know, all that development creates faster runoff. And then you have to find a way to slow it down so that it doesn't actually leave the site faster. So if somebody was uphill from them, they'd be doing that same calculation or attempting to anyway. So that their site wouldn't be impacted by it. So even though it's done in a piecemeal manner, using that strategy, you can still get a system that works.
Sure.
When we have a stormwater plan, it's going to try and identify problem areas and potential projects that we might want to think about to make the system work better. We're still not going to have staff that on a regular basis is thinking about, all right, well, if they're doing this, what does it mean a block away and two blocks away?
Sure.
So it's always going to be just kind of a little bit of a piecemeal process.
Well, a lot of that's going to end up on the Planning and Zoning Commission, I think. And they're the only ones that really see that.
Also on the City Streets Department, if we see an increase in, you know, in runoff impacts or roads, those are all gravel roads over in that part of town. And, you know, when the water runs down the hill, it washes the gravel and, you know.
They are not without issue with that.
I don't know if you brought copies of the stormwater plan?
Yes, I do have a full-size sheet.
If anybody would want to look at it, you know.
And one other item that I was brought to the planning commission's attention was the existing culvert on the west side of Fourteenth Avenue. We are not, our project per se isn't affecting this culvert. And we're not crossing Second Avenue. But it was identified that that culvert is in a failing state. The bottom is eroded, the top is falling down, it's pancake. And that is part of some of the other residents' concerns. And then speaking to what you guys kind of were talking about is that the problem is not just us. It's on each side of the project. So that was something that was identified that the city should take a look at that culvert and the issues that are there. We also looked at the other culverts on the project. I believe that those are in good state. And then there's a culvert in the center of the project on Crossing Second. And then also a dual set of culverts on the east side of the project near Lemuth Avenue. And those seem to be in pretty good state, in my opinion. So that was something that we, both One Roof, Mary, and we wanted to bring the city's attention.
Do we know when that failing culvert was installed?
No, I have no idea.
Must have been a while ago.
It's been a long time.
It's pretty old.
And the new culverts on the, the other culverts are reinforced concrete culverts. And we are also putting in concrete, reinforced concrete culverts on the rest of this project. The soils up here are very corrosive. And it's not uncommon to see the metal, the metal culvert, which is the one that is failing, not last more than, I mean, maybe their expectancy life is, should be forty. These ones typically fifteen, twenty years.
So the culverts on the east end of the project that we talked about is a double culvert. That was a culvert that we repaired ten years ago, or so ago.
Probably 2010, '11, somewhere in there. This 2009 project that initially...
Caused the problem.
Talked about, yeah, brought that to our attention.
So does your, does your project, I mean, does your stormwater treatment plan here, you said that it's not going to impact that failing culvert. But does it identify a dimension for that failing culvert in your plan?
We do not call it a dimension on it. We have a dimension for it, but I don't have it labeled on our plan. No, I do not.
Because it seems like if you guys are going to be digging up stuff, that if we could figure out how to put one in when you guys are digging stuff up, that would help us both.
And I, that would, I can definitely offer that to the city. And if we could incorporate it as part of these plans, if the city wanted to do something as a dual, pardon, I don't know how we can do it exactly. But it would be pretty simple for us to add it to the plan rather than send it out for another set of engineering plans. And I don't want to, I don't, can't speak for your city engineer on that, who's, you guys have do that. I know LHB is your city engineer. But if it were to be something that you wanted for us to include in the project, we sure can do that.
Yeah, let's hold that thought for now.
Okay.
So do you have a copy of those plans, Mike? Because have they dropped one off with you?
Nope, that looks like my copy right there.
That's, okay.
Yeah, we can leave this here.
Okay, good.
And I just would add that we did talk about this culvert a little bit at the EDA meeting last night. And we're hopeful that the city will look at it. And in this light, not only in terms of getting the engineering done at this time, while this other work is going on, but also that when the equipment is there, that it makes sense that it would be a good time maybe to do this, to fix that culvert, rather than mobilizing other equipment on another day to do the work, so.
Yeah, I don't know how big this culvert actually is. It might be something we would replace with our own forces. It might be something that we hired out. So we'll just, like I said, hold that thought for now.
I don't have it labeled on the plans, but it's just, I want to, it's probably a 24-inch culvert.
Yeah, okay. Well, we can certainly, so we'll take a look at that culvert. And so then that's, you guys have gotten us the information that we need. We've got the MPCA contract, we've got the amended agreement. Do you guys have any questions for this? Or anything else that we would like to add to this? Any concerns about the final plat? Or questions for them while they're here?
I just have a curiosity question. So you said to find a house construction in your price range, you become a dealer. So you've never done that before?
Nope.
Just mostly curious.
This is a new venture for us. Because trying to develop affordable housing is so hard. It's such a challenge, especially in conditions where you have all the ledge rock, all the stormwater issues. So this is a way that we feel that we can continue our mission in bringing affordable housing.
So you think this would be a practical thing for you in other locations and other efforts?
I do.
Maybe a better way for you to move forward?
Yes. So I think it's going to work.
Okay.
We know it's going to work.
It is going to.
So lastly, I have put together a little packet. It kind of shows the colors of the houses on the front, along with the final design, the floor layout. So a little bit of information. If anybody is interested, I'd be happy to pass them around.
Thank you.
So have you guys all had a chance to review the final plat and take a look at what's in front of us here? I mean, I guess we're getting some info right now, but...
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2017-36.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Keep us informed. Give us lots of updates, we like that sort of thing.
I'll leave this set of plans, I can roll up, but I'll leave it with you guys. I'll have a half-size plan that's a little bit less cumbersome. It's hard to see some of the stuff, but it's a little less cumbersome to kind of flip through. So I'll leave both of those for you guys as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful. So the next thing we've got for the planning commission report, we have, the next resolution is for the Huluska conditional use permit. So you guys may as well come up. You know where the microphones are? And so a rough summary of this conditional use permit would be that John Huluska owns the property that's out on the Point, the last home that's located on Broadway. And that is a non-conforming use as a residence in the downtown commercial district. So the conditional use permit is being requested for improvements on that residence to continue its use as its non-conforming use as a residence in the downtown business district. So there's a bunch of drawings in there. And there's a cute little mock-up of what the home would look like, or one of the ideas for what the homes would be. So with that said, I don't know, Tim, maybe you have some stuff to say about this too? But that's my general introduction.
Well, you know, and I think, you know, this, we had a good discussion at the planning commission. You know, because this property is a non-conforming property, it poses special problems in terms of dealing with it zoning-wise. And, you know, Mr. Huluska has been working on plans to try to improve that home. And he's come up with a plan that I think the planning commission has agreed, makes sense. And, you know, provides for the improvement to that property under the terms of the ordinance. And of course, this past year, we spent a fair amount of time talking about nonconformities and demanding the ordinance to deal with the nonconformities that we do have in the community. And it's surprising that the few that we do have seem to garner a lot of attention. And I think that's just because the nature of the type of uses, the things that they are, they're not, you know, things that are normal in the particular zone districts that they're in. And so we talk about them a lot and they end up getting a lot of time. There was a concern raised by one of the commissioners about, you know, the potential conflicts with the residential use and the very public beach area. And that, and the conflicts that the owners expressed in the past over people crossing his property or entering his property. And I think we tried to address that and suggested that some kind of a fence be constructed that, you know, works to establish a kind of a boundary. And without being overly prescriptive about that and creating a barrier that, you know, doesn't aesthetically look appropriate either.
Well, that would impact the, impact the, you know, the zone as well, you know?
Yeah. So in the end, I mean, I think if you look at the findings of the planning commission, we agreed to support this request for expansion of his non-conforming residential use and felt that this was the type of thing that was addressed with the amendments to the ordinance that were created, allowing somebody to maintain and even expand their use as long as it wasn't detrimental to the...
Character of the...
To the area, yeah.
I have just one question, like, because that's always been a residence. And I think there's a curb, there is a curb cut there, right?
There is a curb cut on the south side of the property.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I thought.
There is.
Is there any plans to improve the driveway there, or is it...
Well, it'd have to be consistent with, you know, the city ordinance is what the requirements are. And all that curb cut, the driveway crosses an easement that I have there too. We, you know, the driveway is solid. So I wouldn't want to pave it. I don't, I think that'd be out of character for that area, other than maybe pavers. But, you know, put stone or something that would be appropriate. I don't...
Yeah, I just didn't see, I didn't see anything particularly on there. And I don't think it's required by any of the, by any of the conditional use permits.
I did not see anything in the ordinance requiring pavement.
Or any kind of, or any kind of improvement to it.
Yeah.
Well, designated off-street parking maybe. But yeah, what form that takes isn't really important to us.
Okay. Well, that's...
You know, our goal, and, I don't know if you want to speak for...
Oh, no.
Oh, sure, yeah, okay. First of all, this is my brother, Tom. He's also my legal advisor on this matter, in case there's any issues in that regard. And at any rate, I've been working on this for quite some time. And so I really appreciate the hearing today and the hearing that we had at the Planning and Zoning Commission. And the approval, which turned out to be, I guess, unanimous for the project going forward. My intent is simply to regularize our residential occupancy of the site period. And applied for the conditional use permit on the recommendation of Mike here. And so basically, that's it. You've got the plans in front of you, giving the elevations. And I think I've probably talked to each of you, perhaps, except for Tracy individually on this matter during the course of the past year. So I very much appreciate it. Be happy to answer any questions you might have. There is one item that needs to be clarified in that. It says that we've agreed to a split-rail fence on the north and south. And actually, we worked that fence arrangement out with Bruce, our neighbor. And it shows on a drawing that you have, you should have, is an addendum there that indicates on the north side, it would actually be replacing a sort of a nautical visual fence barrier thing that Bruce had put up that washed out in the storm. And so that would just be a very thick rope draped between some heavy posts. And that's, that was the intent there. Bruce's, that was his preference, and that's fine by me. And the reason behind the selection of the type of fence is to maintain all the sightlines for everybody. I don't want to put up a six-foot board fence. I mean, that'd be totally inappropriate for the site. And we don't want to block off the views from the street or people. Because a lot of people enjoy, you know, walking down there. It's a high-traffic area. And we welcome the traffic. We try to keep it away from our windows, if we could, people staring in or off our, people off our furnitures. Our friend Evelyn, she comes over all the time, sits on her stuff, but that's okay. You know, so that was our privacy concerns all along. It is a high-traffic area and we enjoy it. We're, you know, we enjoy being here. We don't mind the visitors, though, to the site. I mean, I meet people from all over the world coming down there. And that's fine, so. With that, we very much appreciate your support. And I'd be happy to answer any specific questions you may have.
Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question, not about the plans at all. And you don't need to answer it either. But I am curious.
Who does my hair, or what?
No. Now that you mention it. Just about the, well, I believe it is Commissioner Miller brought up the police report number.
Sure, be happy to.
Was that regarding trespassing?
No, no, not, none of it is trespassing. I can give you some characterizations of it. I had a young man pull up in a parking lot across the street and pull out a gun and pointed at, draw a beat on me on two occasions in one afternoon. I had my car broken into once. I had a, I had the stays on my mainsail cut on my sailboat in the yard. I had them loosened up on another occasion when they were repaired. So the sail, I noticed the mainsail was flopping loose. I had three young men trying to kick a herring gull to death in the front yard that was injured. Let's see, I believe I called on the bear cub. I had a...
I think everybody called on the bear cub.
Yeah, everybody did. I had a, well, how can I say it? I had a young lady who was artfully engaged with three guys on the break wall. I had a young lady who was artfully engaged with three guys on the break wall one afternoon during a very highly active tourist day down there, and I think that generated by myself probably three calls before I got a response. I had
That gives me an idea.
Neighbor sicking his
That gives you an idea?
Sicking his
Dance check down.
His rottweiler on a, on a tourist dog that was, they were sitting on the beach, I think that red plane. Let's see, I had DEA chasing a drug deal through the woods, and the kid was hiding in there, and so I called to tell them where it was. I had a older woman, she had an urgent need to relieve herself along the beach in front of the woods next to me, you know, it's, it's an interesting area, actually.
Yeah.
Some of it, not very tasteful, but always interesting, and so I always follow Mr. Ross' advice, if you have an issue that comes up like that, you call the sheriff. And I, to quantify it, I've been there since 2003, and so that was 2005, it's 2017, that's twice a year.
Well, I think
Some weekends I get, I'm sure that there's 2,000 people that walk by.
Yeah, probably.
And you see everything.
Okay, thank you.
So
Are you sure you want to stay there, then, after like
I, I don't, you know, like, my brother, this is my brother, and him and I, we grew up in northeast Minneapolis, across from, across from the Polish Palace, across from a brewery, within five blocks of me, there were probably 12 bars, at least, robberies.
So it just feels like, feels like
My musa, I mean, it's fine, yeah. It's lovely at all.
Entertaining.
It's actually quiet. It's very quiet.
Right, it's quite quiet, yeah. So does anybody else have any other questions?
That was gonna be my exact same question, because I didn't have a chance to speak with him personally, and I was the same thing, do you want to be here if it's this much of an issue, but if you feel comfortable, then that's fine.
All right.
I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 2017
Yes, 38.
38, is that what you said?
Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? Be fun to see some changes happening down there. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Carry. Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so the next thing we have on the agenda is the North House conversation, so, Mr. Wright, you know how this works.
Where did you get here?
He snuck in.
Yeah, I didn't see him.
Like a ghost in the night.
The door.
What's that? Oh, did it apparate?
It apparates.
Maybe outside.
Okay, so, I'll give a little brief introduction, and I'm sure Greg is ready to, ready to give his own introduction. So this, this summer is, or this year marks the 20th anniversary of North House School as, and in relation to the, to the city, that puts it at a decent chunk, a little, like, over halfway through the 20, the 25-year renewable lease that the city and North House have. North House has made considerable progress towards the criteria that the city set on that automatically renewing lease, so a very clear thing to make, make point there is that the criteria that were set, set out were criteria for the automatic renewal for another 25 years of the lease, and didn't, didn't have any language put in there about, about a voluntary renewal or expense, extension, extension of the, of the lease. So Greg has some info for us, can explain a little bit how things are going on the 20th anniversary year, and then I believe that there's a bit of a, a bit of a question slash request sort of section of this conversation as well, so, does that work?
Perfect.
Can you take it from there?
I'll try. Thanks, Jake. And thanks, everybody. Yeah, great to be here. 20th anniversary year, you know, put simply, how are things at North House? Things are going great at North House, our strongest year ever, in terms of students and member support. More than a couple little exciting projects underway in the sense of looking to our future. We've just launched our new Artisan Development Program, or Apprenticeship Program, as some people have said, bringing two new, as everybody knows, because I was here talking about, if you remember, the, the conditionally, was it a, the permit for the house we're renting, you know, so lots of, lots of moving pieces going well at North House. I'm here tonight because on this, our 20th anniversary, we're making a request to the city. I like to think I come and often share good news, I'd like to think I'm not here constantly asking for things. Maybe you feel differently, I hope that's not the case, I like
Most things don't have to be mutually exclusive, and they often aren't.
But I am coming to ask something tonight, and I'm gonna ask tonight, and hoping to come back in about a month, to see kind of how, where, and how you feel, and so this is kind of helping try to start the conversation. Just to kind of set the stage, so, so when North House turned 10, we realized at age, actually about age eight, we're gonna grow out of our campus. It's a good thing to figure that out, sooner or not later, and, and we came knocking, because we had a five-year lease. And the question was, well, that's neat, but if we're gonna invest in this place, build for the future, nobody's gonna plan on a five-year timetable. And so the city's response was, we'll talk, and indeed, we crafted a 25-year lease, which we're halfway into. And why did we do that? Not just so our partnership could thrive, but because furthering the adventures of a place called North House involve lots of partners. Partners invest because they believe there's a future. Futures mean time in a place called home, our home's on the harbor. So, here we are 10 years later, and we're asking again, and, you know, the basic idea is, again, North House is growing, North House is thriving, how do we begin to plan for our future? And you can wave your hands around and talk about, well, we're halfway through, and there's 13, but 13 plus 25 is this, but if we do in this and this, and that's a pretty good story. I'd really much rather get rid of all those numbers and talk about, we've got a future here, and now we're planning for what that's gonna look like. That's a better conversation to have, and so that's why we're here to ask, would the city consider renewing our lease or re-crafting our lease? And there's three different models on the table in my conversations with all of you. One is, how about a 50-year lease? Why 50 years? Well, we have 13 years remaining, plus 25 years on an automatic renewal, that's 38, and 38 approximately equals 50. Not quite, but you get it, nice round numbers.
He's a craft guy, not a math guy.
I was actually a math teacher once upon a time. But the idea of rounding up always helps the story. Another model would be, well, how about this automatic renewal thing? 50 plus 50? And rather than, but what, what measuring, what performance might, so what do we want North House doing 50 years from today? Do you know? I'm not sure. So how would we define performance? And the better answer, an answer might be to say, well, let's, let's keep it simple, let's talk about what we want North House to do in the next 10 years, that could be the performance criteria, let's say they need to have a million-dollar endowment fund, let's say they need to invest 1.2 million dollars in improving and advancing their campus. Why 1.2 million? Well, because it's twice what we might have paid in property tax in the past 20 years. I don't know, why not 1.2 million? But you need, if you needed some measure. The third idea, which again, came up once upon a time when Anton, I think, said, geez, Greg, why don't you, don't you want to just buy the property? And I said, well, you know, if we had a million dollars to either move North House forward or buy a piece of property, what would I rather do? I just would rather know that we get to be here for a long time, I don't know, 99 years. So that's as initially stated. So, in your packet, there's a little letter about all this, which you maybe have encountered. In your packet's a little list of performance criteria, how have we done, stacked up against the three performance criteria? In your packet's a little info about student days growing, that's neat, probably all in the summer, right? Wrong. Student days spread out over a whole year, and you'll notice, yeah, there's some pretty big adventures in the middle of the year, but there's a lot of big bars in many, many months of the year, that's not just good for North House. And then finally, there's some stuff about our values and our vision, where we're pushing. And I'd argue this is as much about that as it is about this. You know, it's who we are that matters as much as what we're doing. So in packet number two, which I brought tonight, and I apologize, I would have loved to email this to you, and that was not in my cards the past week, so I apologize for that, but we have a month to think, I brought you some additional resources. First, there's an overview of the status and kind of timeline, I just described the 25-year lease build-out process, that's outlined in timeline. There's a section called Doing the Math by your, by the math teacher inside me, that's where we got the 37, 38 years, right? And then, looking forward, three different concepts, which I just outlined. The next several pages ask a simple question. So the North, so North House and the city, we're in this together, how do our efforts align with the city's vision for its future? And there's six value statements that are part of that effort, I hope I have them right. One is supporting enhancing local businesses, well, North House certainly is one. Our year-round growth is fueling other local businesses, 87% of our students come to North House because we're North House, we're their primary reason for coming here. Encouraged to the expansion of sustainable energy use, hope everybody knows we have a solar-powered building on our campus, hope everybody knows we teach about sustainable energy and other things like that. Obviously, affordable, sustainable communities, important, we teach home building, and that said, we also have created over the years multiple full-time sustainable positions, nine full-time positions currently, three part-time year-round, and growing. Expanding education for mind, body, and soul, we've grown every year except for one. People-friendly infrastructure, supporting active living, I can think of innumerable projects we've done, but two that I love that we've done with the city, one, some timbered benches back when we turned 10, which now still stand proudly around our community, which I love, but if that timbered bridge in the rec park hasn't inspired people to move around this community on their feet, I don't know what has. It's just an iconic piece, so thanks to the rec park for being such a great partner. And then, of course, the connection to the outdoors. And if the schooner yordas, if our field sessions, et cetera, aren't part of that, I don't know, I don't know what is, you know, we definitely love, love this place called the north. So, lot more words there for you to read. That said, the last page is something I put together at Tracy's encouragement, and then in conversation I've chatted with all of you about this, too, but one granted question, and this is a really important question. North House is a 501(c)(3). When we're executing our mission, we're not required to pay property tax. That's not our issue, that's a federal government requirement, but it's a fact, and so how much property tax has been left on the table? Well, if you do the math, it turns out over 20 years, someplace over $596,000 over 20 years. How did I figure that out? I looked at the three pieces of property that we either rent or that we own, I looked at the highest possible tax rate on each of them, and took the valuations from the county. I did the math, I totaled up, boom, and then I subtracted the rent payments we've made and the property tax that we have paid, because of course, when we're not doing our mission, like when we're renting part of a building to North Shore Title, we absolutely pay property tax. Right? And then I did the math, I divided by 20, so about $25,000 a year would be one round number to attach. So the second question is, well, that's neat, that's an investment, what's the return? So I did some similar math, I said, you know, when we turned 10, we did an economic impact study, the estimate is that we have about a $6 million impact when we turn 10, so that must mean at year zero, we had zero impact, you can do the math from there if you just kind of chart it linearly. And then I said, now let's pretend that we have not grown at all the past 10 years. Well, that's a fib, but that's okay, we'll just make that assumption.
Easy math.
Easy math, right? Okay, so the total impact? $93 million.
Over 20 years.
Over 23 years, 20 years, yep. Or $4,650,000 a year. Where I come, that's a great return. But this isn't just about that, and that's the reason I, this is last, it's just some numbers, because there's other pieces, employment over 20 years, over $4 million paid out in employment and benefits, obviously, there's free programming for this community, over 33,000 people served, at least, free in this community. So there's many, many other numbers we could look at, and indeed, we're creating an economic impact study to look at our 20th year, that'll be available in two weeks, so I'll share that with you before, before the meeting. But I wanted to, one, set the stage for discussion, two, share a little bit more info, and three, say, okay, so, economic impact study's coming, what else do you need to consider our request? So that's essentially why I'm here.
You said there's a further study coming?
Yes, there'll be a study coming out in two weeks.
Will that be similar to the 10-year?
Yes, well, it's pretty much mirrors, you know, because it made more, why do two studies that don't speak to each other? Basically, we gather the same metrics and everything like that.
Does anybody have any questions? Anything else they'd like to ask Greg of, ask of Greg, or anything of that sort?
Yeah, one of the things that comes to mind for me is that, you know, if we're looking at extending the lease in any of these formats that you're asking, is there anything that the city would want to reconsider in terms of the existing lease? And I don't have anything particularly in mind, but it might be an opportunity for us to take a look at that, too, and see if there's some, or any of the terms that, that we might, might be interested in modifying, or adding, or changing, or doing something different. I mean, as long as you're asking, maybe we should be asking ourselves kind of the same question, you know, is there something that we need out of this that we're not, not getting right now?
Yeah, I would, I would like to actually have it on paper, I mean, you've talked to me about it, whatever, Greg and I have spoken, but I would like to. And when this is all said and done, I think, just like we spoke the other week about the library, this is a time for me that this should be out on our webpage with the city when this is all done, very well transparent and spelled out. So if there's questions or concerns ever again, it's here, go look and read.
Put the lease on the website, you say?
The whole, a summary term.
Yeah.
You know, a summary of it, why we made the decisions we made, things like this will help, but it all should be in one spot, very easy for anyone to read. Because I do get feedback, and I do get comments from people in the community, and it's hard for us to always remember all these details, which is exactly what I said about the library programming last week, we don't always know, and people look at me all the time, like, well, don't you know, no, I don't know, always. But there's no reason now with the webpage that we can't put these things out, and if people, I can just simply say, look, go over here and read, not only can you quickly read the terms of our lease, you can read, you know, our thoughts and why we made the decisions we made, this should be a lot easier for that. But yeah, I'd like to read it, and I think it's a good time to look this over. You know, let's just bring it up, I, you know, you met with everybody, right? So I'll just start the conversation. So Greg and I met, what, twice? And what I hear most commonly from other business owners, but they don't pay taxes, and one of the things I mentioned to Greg is, you know, this is not a conversation about like or not like, is North House great or not great, that's not really the point, but when you're like everyone else, and you are a business, you aren't just little North House anymore, you're one of the most sophisticated, biggest operations going around right now. You can't not help but feel how other businesses start to feel when they have to put those line items in for their budget, including sales tax. And you spend a lot of money in the community. And when, if, so my thought to him was, put that in your budget for a minute, you can take it out later, but You can take it out later, but see how it would impact your planning if some of those costs were in there. And then you can maybe be more empathetic to all of your neighbors when they make that comment, because somehow or other, you all have to come together for a meeting. You have to understand each other. Everybody's point has validity. So those were the comments I made to Greg about all of that that concerns me. And then just when it gets done, it should be a numbers decision. You know, what we do doesn't make sense. We're in charge of making sure that we can keep our taxes low as possible, but still do the best we can. And that's an important piece of property that we own. Are we getting the best return on it that we can? That's not even like a North House, and I'm not saying we're here totally just for money. There's a lot more like our values, which you pointed out, that really matter a lot. I liked it that is open space. As far as I'm concerned, everything around the harbor should be open to everybody. But we still have an obligation to do the best we can for everyone for that property. So I think that's an important consideration when we get done with this. I'm not saying it's an impossibility or it can't work, but I just think we have to seriously think about it and make sure we're doing right by everyone that way. And that's not to say you haven't been great neighbors and done everything you can to make it open, welcoming space for anybody. It's not a common otherwise. But it's just the things I think about.
So the second thing that you said, or you were saying, is that the best return?
Yeah. I mean, it's just like we have that obligation for the park, the rec park, we have that for our liquor store, we're doing the best we can there as... So I think those are the things I think about and feel we need to address when we make a decision about it.
And you were saying the best return, both financially as well as values?
Values and community.
Yeah, as to our community. And I just wanted you guys to know the conversations I had with Greg and what I brought up to him, and did I miss anything?
I think you did good.
You know, you've had, you put a lot of effort into this to go to talk to everybody and be ready and be really planned. And even the fact that you're going to have an economic study back that quick is like amazing.
Well, they've been working on it for a while, I think.
Well, not really, right?
Got stalled out, and now we're right on it. Yep.
Yeah, so it's a lot of effort.
Yeah, but the community needs to know. I mean, I... You know, it's a 501(c)(3). Again, North House doesn't pay property taxes. And I agree with Tracy, we are business. And I'm glad that the integrity and determination that we run our business with shines through. I mean, this is something we're serious about. And that said, one of the things when you're an educational nonprofit like we are, the federal government, not this city council, not the state representatives, but the federal government has decided institutions like North House don't have to pay property tax. And my hope is that that clear benefit to us and our partnership with this community is returning things of value here. And, you know, it's your job to decide whether it's value worthy of renewal of this kind. So I understand that. But, and I certainly want to be able to talk about the numbers, and that's why we're working pretty hard to get them to you. And I'm pretty serious that I don't think it's just numbers. It's in part about the future we envision for this community. Does North House have more investments to make in its future? We do. We are, you know, we have not, you know, we're... There's a lot more work for the school to do. I don't just mean growing in the sense of finding more students, but where does the future of craft come from? How should we play a role in that? How can this community help bring that story of the north alive? It turns out, that is something this world is looking to North House to do. Do we want that here? Do we want those young men and women here? I don't know. I think the answer, you know what, I think the answer is... You know, the hope in looking at some of these things is to kind of clear away some of the debris and details and just say, forward, let's go. And again, not by rushing things through. That's why I'm here to say, let's talk. I want to have a month so you can hear from folks and you can think. I mean, so I get the information you need. And then, yeah, I'm hopeful we can have a great conversation and we can figure out how to move forward together. So I hope there is, in our ability to talk about numbers, a way to think about the pragmatics of the business. And I hope there's a way also for us to celebrate the unique partnership we've crafted over 20 years, which, you know, I feel great about. So, yeah. So thanks, Tracy, for bringing that up.
So you're going to bring forward the next, the more up-to-date economic impact numbers? And Tracy's asking for us to kind of think about the best return for that property, both financially and values. Is there anything else that we want to see before we meet with Greg again?
I believe that we should, that Mike should probably send us all the actual language of the lease and that we should all read it and that we should all...
Well...
You can gloss it.
Is it like a Cliff Notes?
It's not. Operationally, we haven't had any issues with it. And I think in our earlier conversations about this, we haven't talked about any terms that we would want to change. But one thing we did identify is that this lease was drafted before Chris was working for us.
Huh?
And so we certainly want to give Chris the lease and give him a chance to go through it and suggest any language changes that he would have put in there.
Yeah, one of the things that I'd like to see, which I think would maybe reinforce your argument that we should be extending this lease, and that's, you know, some projections of your future and your plans long-term, not just the kind of the immediate plans, but the long-term future. If we're going to give you a 50-year lease or a 99-year lease. You know, what's your vision, you know, for what North House is going to be somewhere down the line, further than what we can see today? But, you know, I mean, might that be helpful for us in contemplating what we would do? I think there'd be some value to that.
Is that something that the board has talked about?
Definitely.
50-year?
10 years.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
That's right. Before you started, just draw the line.
You know, but, you know, in a nutshell, and I can try to think about whether I can, what I can share that'd be, help think beyond these comments, but, you know, I'd say, share a couple thoughts. One, obviously, North House's coursework is thriving. And if you've become and as you become pretty much the Midwestern institution that defines what folk school learning, what traditional craft learning is like, what do your classrooms need to look like? They need to convey your commitment to craft. Beautiful woodworking shops, beautiful boat-building shops, beautiful fiber shops. What's one of our fastest-growing themes? Fiber. Where is that classroom exactly? Where is that classroom? Not yet is the correct answer. Foods, blacksmithing, metalwork, jewelry. Turns out, a lot of the silver work on traditional knife-making is actually kind of like jewelry. And so there's some classrooms that meld together. So one, you see evolution in the resources we offer students. Second thing that you see is, again, kind of this process of us creating a future for craft. Where, you know, maybe everybody knows, we've had an intern program for the past 15 years. I think you've heard this story before, correct? So we've just launched our artisan development program. Why? 10 months is a wonderful beginning, a wonderful way to open the door to craft. You know, does it create a Harley Refsaw? Do you all know who Harley is? Does it create a Joe Wood? Does it create a Carol Colber? Does it create a Yogi Sundqvist? You know, somebody who's known internationally for his work in craft? No, doesn't. Well, then how do these people begin? Well, they need time. They need mentors. They need a community that supports their interests. Well, okay, we're, you know, we've hired the first two. Where does this go? How many are there? Long-term, what is this, what is this program built? Is they find their roots here in craft? How are they tied to this place? How do they view returning to North House or being part of North House and teaching and yet also traveling the world to teach? How does that fabric weave back into our community? You know, great, great question. And then, for that matter, we've had a resident instructor program, maybe everybody knows this, for the summer season. And people like coming up here for a week and kind of helping us tell the story of craft live out on our commons. Our goal is eventually for that program to grow until it's essentially year-round. What does a summer residency do having an instructor on campus? Well, how would it work differently if they were here in the winter? Is it so much to interengage with the public or is it more for them to find inspiration in craft? And again, forge that connection to North House. And how does that play out over the years as they see this as one of their, the home from which their craft, in a sense, grows and matures? I don't know how any of those cards play out exactly. All of them intrigue and entice me. And they're not all about biggering North House. You know, they're about going, to me, they're about going deeper in the sense of our commitment to craft and our commitment to growing the community of craft, you know, that I think has a home here. And from my vantage point, I'm very biased, to me, it's the kind of community I'd love to live in. You know, I remember visiting the John C. Campbell School, which is a school that's many decades older than North House, kind of the granddaddy of folk schools. And you drive the country roads around the community. Violin maker, you know, on the mailbox, potter, right? The neighbors I'd love to have. And, I mean, we've got to have one of everything in this community if we're going to thrive. So it's not like we just need violin makers, believe me, I understand that. But clearly, the arts are part of the vitality of this community. We want people in the arts, in the folk arts, in traditional craft to imagine that their home should be here. We need to act like we believe that. And we need to build the community they want to be part of too. That's just under great what this is about, I think. So, I probably said more than, more than you needed, but now, thank you for the...
Waxing philosophical.
Thank you for the chance to speak briefly about that.
Yeah, so I think that we need to get that lease to Chris so that he can take a look at it. I think that you should send it to us so that we can, we can put our thoughts together about it, both about what the lease says currently and if there were going to be any changes to the lease, what those things look like. And then you're going to get us that report when two weeks is up, and then we will return to this conversation next month. If any of you believe that we should have a council conversation, a council workshop conversation, work session kind of thing on this, we should discuss that as well. I think that we can probably hash most of this out with looking at the lease and putting our thoughts together and then sitting down to discuss it. But I also think that if that is something we feel is necessary, that we make space for that. Because this is, you know, things that are being requested are significant, and we want to make sure that we, like what Tracy's saying, is doing the thing that is the best for the community and also the best thing for, for not just certain members of the community, but the entire community, so.
Do you think we can talk about this next meeting? Or do you think Chris can have it looked over by then?
Yeah, that's three weeks. Chris, you can probably fit in a review of this lease in the next three weeks?
In the next couple of weeks, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll put that on the next agenda for discussion?
Well, if you want to discuss it, we can at least get the existing copy to you now, and then Chris can have a review of it for us in three weeks.
Okay.
And if you want to then put some time on that agenda, we can do that. But that, what Greg's talking about is coming back now in three weeks, maybe five weeks.
Oh, okay.
So two meetings from now to reconvene this conversation.
Well, I think that we need to talk about it before we sit down again with Greg.
Right, that's in three weeks.
That's what you're saying, so three weeks and then five weeks.
Three weeks means we review what Chris has to say, we look at our own ideas, then five weeks, we sit down with Greg and we have a conversation.
By then, we're ready.
Yeah, and if things occur to you in the meantime, and Greg's made the invitation, and I would say, please also let me know if there are pieces of information that we can get to everyone, or if there's ideas that you need us to do some investigating about. Just let me know, and we'll do that.
I had just two other things since we're on the topic. And one of those, which Mike kind of reminded me of when we spoke one day, you know, when you get the comments about the taxes, you know, obviously, people look at their total tax bill. But we have to remind ourselves, as Mike said, oh, we... This is the city portion.
What's that?
Oh, we're really having a conversation about is the city portion of that tax, right? The rest is, you know, if there's a conversation from others around tax, this body can only address the city portion of it or think about it in those terms. The rest is county, state, whatever. You know, have you texted them? Right. Then the other thing, which I actually started thinking about a long time ago when I was still on the community fund board, is there's, as we all know, this whole county runs on grants and nonprofits, and it does a really great job of that. But there's all varying ranges of nonprofits, and you're probably one of the largest and most sophisticated of any of them. And one of the things I would have loved then, and I'm not on that board anymore, is to have organizations like yours share time with some of our less developed and in more need nonprofits to share your expertise, your talents. One of your employees is now on the Cook County Community Fund. Yippee-skippee, that is a very wonderful thing. But that would be another question I would ask North House. Businesses and people around this community give an enormous amount of their time and money to not, other nonprofit, you know, like what the community gives to let Fisherman's Picnic move forward. And that just pops into my head because it was last weekend. But constantly, there are fundraisers and events and whatever for all sorts of very great things in this community. But I would ask, and I don't know the answer, it's not like you aren't, I just don't know, but are there more things North House could do to help other nonprofits in our community? Either sharing how you succeed in doing what you do well as a nonprofit, tips of them just doing better marketing, whatever it might be. But that would be something, it's not really a city maybe related item.
Sure.
But, and maybe you give that a lot of thought already, I don't know.
Well, I'll note a couple things. I'm sure there's more we can do. Two, so, two things. One, we're routinely asked to give to other community nonprofits, and we give in the form of our mission, i.e., we give gift certificates for fundraisers and things like that. So, and my hope is that those are beneficial. Certainly, people keep coming back and asking for them. We give away thousands and thousands of dollars to nonprofits in this community and along the North Shore. I mean, it's not, which is a wonderful thing for us to do. Second is, we do help convene a group called the Arts Nonprofit Brown Bag Group, and we get together quarterly at least to talk about how our work together connects and, you know, and/or, you know, just to share ideas and thoughts. That's returned different things in different years. I've also served on the Creative Economy Group, as has Jessa. So, I mean, I would say, you know, we all swim in different pools of water to some degree, and yet we're all swimming. And so there is info we can share and ways we can collaborate. And that's part of why we collaborate programmatically with our colony, with the Fiber Guild, with, you know, dot, dot, dot. Yeah. Are there more ways we could be of service? Probably. So I'm open to creative ideas for sure.
Well, I think that's a good example of the type, like, of other types of things. I don't think that this meeting right now is the place for us to dive into many more ideas about how collaborations or what sorts of requests would be appropriate for a lease conversation. But I do think that we have a pretty, a pretty good plan for moving forward in the next, the next couple of meetings to discuss, to continue to discuss this. And you've provided us with some pretty, some pretty good information. Projections are something that I heard Tim say, which will probably be a part of your next, of that report that you're going to get in two weeks. So we'll wait to see that, and we'll do our homework on the lease, and Chris will do his homework, and then we can come back. Chris will do his homework and then we can come back in three weeks to have a conversation about that. Does that sound sufficient?
I think those are great additions though to your community engagement portion.
Thank you.
Great, well, Greg, thank you so much for giving us some information.
Great.
We'll look forward to the upcoming conversations, so.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. All right, we're going to move right along. So, you're finally up, although you're not the last one on the list. All right, so you've got some, some stuff for us. You've got an update?
Just an update for it.
Well, I guess you, you just have the update. We have a couple of other things.
Oh, you do, okay.
I think.
Yeah.
Well, just one other.
Just one.
Just one other, which is important to you.
Okay. Again, my name is John Higginmore with the Goff Construction. We are building the new public works building up a road and I'm just here to give you a quick update on the progress of construction. Right now, the mechanical electrical underground should be complete this week. The bar joists middle deck is complete. Right now, the sub roof is about sixty, or about 50% complete and the sub fascia is about 75% complete. We expect the roofing, depending on weather, to be complete by next Wednesday or Thursday. And we're complete with the rough grading of the actual site. We will start the vapor barrier and slab insulation Monday and pour late next week or the first part of the week of the 21st. Upcoming events or tasks, framing of the interior walls and concrete block will happen after the slab is poured and we're expecting the windows in about two and a half weeks.
There you go. And you've got that Lester, or no, was it, what is it, Lester Building? The cold storage building? What was the company that we-
Yeah, I think it's Lester if I'm not mistaken.
So that, we got that on the calendar now?
Not quite yet. We still need to receive the shop drawings for it.
Okay, gotcha.
Confirmed size, elevations, all that, make sure everything is per the specifications.
Okay. But other than that, everything seems to be going on, on schedule?
Yeah, we're within two, three days of the actual schedule that was in the original contract.
Okay.
Well, I'm a month off in my work, so.
Hmm? A little rain.
You'll catch up in a while.
I have a ride. Yeah, there's various meetings and-
Rain's a good excuse.
Yeah, it was the rain. Okay, so do you guys have any questions for him regarding, regarding the update? Because that's easier for the update.
Yeah, that's good.
Good. And again, everyone's welcome, just please stop in and say hi and grab a hard hat and vest and-
While you're here, so this is going to be part of my update, my, my council update, but I'll just throw it in here. So, I went out with Mike and we sat in on the, on the, their monthly meeting that they have. Biweekly, thank you. Biweekly, totally more than bi-monthly, than monthly. But that, or bi-monthly. One of the things that was brought up was in concern about the solar, because we had talked about that, that the center section of the roof had been, had been reinforced to support the additional weight of solar, but the rest of it hadn't. And when we went up there and inspected it, it looked that the, the only real difference in the joists was where it connects to the, to the wall. There was, there was a couple of extra reinforced pieces that, that were welded into there. Have you heard back from engineer about any kind of-
I have not seen anything from the engineer, but the latest email that was, that I looked at was concerning the actual size of the roof that is acceptable to solar panels. And that sort of kind of gave the designers, LHB and the other guy, a little bit better idea on what they could actually provide.
Right.
So, and I don't know those exact numbers.
Yeah.
But, you know, for size-wise.
It's pretty big.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be, we'll be looking for information.
If you stop by tomorrow after your radio gig, I could show you the email and that give you a little bit up-to-date, more information on that.
Well, just as information comes in, just make sure it gets to Mike and then back or something. Be good to know. All right, do you guys have any more questions for him, comments? Just not anymore. Bad jokes?
Lot of those.
All right, thanks, John.
Thank you very much and have a good evening.
Thanks.
All right, so the last thing we have to do is we have, we have a second pay request for this project that, yeah, see, right? Do you want to know about that?
He doesn't care.
He's getting paid either way. So, there's a second pay request. In your package, you have the summary of the, the contract sum and then the total amount of paid and then the status of the project as far as what's been completed, what's in progress. I can't remember what the actual sum for pay, pay amount number two is.
It's $331,120.
That's the one. We're still not going to get seven digits out of this.
No.
Hard not to, no. I would make motion to approve pay request number two.
I'll second. Motion in a second, any further discussion?
We're still waiting for a little more documentation, certified payrolls from some of the subs. So, we'll hold the check until that stuff is actually-
Is that going to make that, make the disco up a little bit then?
No, no, this is the right amount. We just have documentation that we're collecting.
Oh, I got you.
Mainly as a part of one of our grants, our TRPRV grant.
Yeah, triple stamped.
Maybe that too. But it's also just good practice for us to know that they're tracking all the subs that are on site, those subs are certifying to us that they actually get paid and it's just a good process for us to go through.
That's super. All right. Motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
opposed? Carries. Wonderful, so we'll move right along. So, the last thing on the agenda is the Oswald Erosion Control MOU?
What's that stand for?
Yeah, we changed it, MOU is a boring, so we went to an MOA instead.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, really, I don't know, whatever, right? The, the concept here is simple.
That's what I said.
The document was, it's not the Mall of America anymore, I'm sorry.
Museum of Art.
Yeah, it's the Museum of Art.
There you go.
The concept is simple, the document was sent around this afternoon, said if you haven't had a chance to review it yet, it's in your email. Chris and I just kind of kicked around the last bit of details about it today. We have a license in place with the Oswalds that allowed them to build a driveway in the improved section of 10th Avenue that's adjacent to their property. That's from 2014. They've built the driveway, there's been some stormwater erosion issues. They've been working with Cook County Solar Water to try and get the project together. This document, MOA, MOU, whichever memorandum you'd prefer to call it, is just giving them permission and saying that, yes, the city will approve this document, or this project that they've sent us the plans for and that they will still, that this project will be subject to the terms and conditions of the license that we already did, which talks about who is responsible for paying for things and maintaining things and liability and all those other issues. So, it took us a while to find the right solution. I think this is it. I hope you'll approve it and so will they.
Well, there you go. That's a good, a good summary of it. The drawing is, I think, a very good one, shows the, the erosion plan, basically. And unless there's any questions, or are there any questions?
I mean, only, only that, I mean, I think I've seen this and looked at it and what's going on there and it's, you know, it's interesting. But what happens if, I mean, it kind of goes back to what I said before and the last time, just looking at stormwater management and again, like this kind of approach, right? Which I understand, this development happens piecemeal, so therefore, solutions have to be looked at. But what happens if, you know, so if, for example, 10th Avenue gets, that's 10th, right?
Yeah.
So what happens if 10th gets pushed through? Does that just get culvertized underneath that, so the, or is that something that would happen later on? It just looks at later?
It's not likely that 10th will get pushed through. The license talks about what happens if 10th is pushed through. That their improvements, you know, if we need them to be removed, they'll be removed.
Gotcha.
That, you know, this is still our property that we're capable of making whatever decisions we need to, for public good on. And I think that we wouldn't necessarily have to prescribe the right answer to that question now. If it came to, we need to make some different improvements there, we'll come together with Soil and Water, we'll talk with the Oswalds, we'll use our own engineers, we'll figure out what we need to do and who'd be responsible for it.
Sure. No, I, you know, I'm just, just wondering.
So, need to make a motion, is that, yeah, and we don't have it in the packet, but it was emailed, yes, so make a motion for the MOU. Oswald Erosion Control MOU.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion in a second, any further discussion? I think a lot of work's been done on this. I hope that this is a workable solution. I do agree with Anton that, that part of town has a lot of groundwater, we really need, I think we need to, you know, take a really serious look at how that water gets down the hill so it doesn't start compromising other things. But that's all that I have to say.
So, when the co-op builds this expansion, it should go over that part of town?
Well. Anything else, any other, any other discussion? Or none? All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Carries. All right. So that, that goes through, which is good. Next thing and the last thing on the agenda is something from the PUC, from the wastewater treatment plant. So, we have taken some action in regard to mercury standards that the state and MPC has, has put out there and inconsistent with those actions that we have taken, we need to figure out how much it would cost us to actually meet those criteria. So, in order to do that, the PUC has, has approved doing this wastewater analysis contract with AE2S to, to figure out how much it would be to get our wastewater treatment plant to conform to the mercury standards that are being prescribed.
You can see the scope of work, it's actually fairly extensive. It's the first attachment to the deal. So, there's a lot more to it than just cost analysis. It's really reviewing what the technological options are. It's actually taking kind of a system look and also a look at the facility itself. So, it's, it's a lot of good information for the PUC to know about, you know, how the system's operating and what changes we might be looking at. They actually approved this plan some time ago, we've just been doing contract work and so it's ready for your approval and I hope you just go ahead and approve.
Probably make a motion.
Okay, there's a motion, do we have a second? Motion in a second, any further discussion?
You may see an article in the Star Tribune next week about us and our situation with the MPC.
Standing alone.
You beat me to that one.
Are we lawsuited or?
Well, it's not, there's no lawsuit.
Go away, that's right. Standing alone.
It's an administrative, administrative-
I'm pretty sure it's about us, I haven't seen it. They've been in contact with our, our attorney's office and, and we'll have some information for you if you do get questions, we'll just give you a quick kind of bullet point summary and then we'll also talk about if after we see the story, if there's a need for us to do some kind of response or letter to the editor that we might ask the Star Tribune just to make sure that people understand what the city's motivation is here and that it's really based on our own environmental concern and not some desire to shirk our duties in the manner. So, more information on that coming.
Right, and I, I was in touch with the, with the journalist who was doing that article as well and I tried very, very hard to have that be, be the message, was that we're not trying to shirk any responsibilities, we're, you know, we're, we're trying to put our resources where they're best, best used, so.
Before you brought this up, I was going to ask, because this is an issue with other communities, right? Have we talked about this before? That it's a standard where nobody's quite sure how they can totally-
Well, different communities have handled it in different ways and partially depending upon the advice they get from their own engineers, the funding they've received from the state to try some of these things. But this isn't something where there's just an obvious technological answer and even if there was some more developed science on it, all these treatment plants are kind of one-off constructions. They use similar concepts, but they really are based on very specific sets of circumstances and how they execute them. And so, it's, it's not a simple thing to say how or if we could even meet some of these requirements.
So, will what we're doing right now be something of interest to these other communities?
I think our strategy will be of interest to them in how we're trying to solve the problem, at least now, technologically wise, I don't know yet. I guess we're going to have to wait and see what the results of this-
I meant strategy wise.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, if that's probably will be useful.
Or do we know what other communities, I mean, do you talk with other communities to find out what their strategies are or you-
And, you know, this, it, a lot of it has to do with the timing of our wastewater licenses as well. And so, there's a big group of us that have all at the same time had to deal with this. Some have already dealt with it and have tried to actually implement some technological solutions and yes, our, our staff has talked that there's some, others I think haven't had to face it yet.
One that I, that I've, I've talked to the mayor of, of another city that has been, or that had struggled with this and, and they took the, you know, doing technological improvements to their wastewater treatment plant to do it and it cost them several million dollars. So that, you know, that's just one of the things, it's like, ah.
Did they succeed?
I don't even know, I'd have to follow up, but-
It's not, I don't think it's an answered question.
Yeah, it's too soon to kind of know how it all shakes out.
Yeah, so it's, I mean, I can, I can certainly follow up on that and see, but it's, you know, it's kind of a big unknown.
Standards change too?
Well, that's, that's why, that's why we're taking this whole thing out, is that hearts per billion is a thing now. Okay, so anyway, so we, we passed that, right? Wastewater Analysis Contract?
Nope.
Okay, so we're still in discussion. The motion in a second.
You did that already.
I know, but that's what I'm saying, we have a motion in a second. We're finishing up the discussion.
Right.
Well, what happens after that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's called calling the question.
You said I twice.
Anyway, it's, yeah, kind of, aye, aye, captain. Hey, guess what time it is? Mills, what's up?
Well, we had a very productive bathroom meeting. I'm happy for the people that were able to attend. I don't know if I'm going to share what went on in that meeting.
You just don't.
It was just really good.
We'll let Tracy bring it up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Tracy's the ba, you're the bathroom representative.
So, anyway, you have to wait your turn before you talk about it.
Also, park board and there was some interesting discussion with the park board just regarding the comprehensive plan and consultants had asked Dave to, you know, get some kind of park vision items and so he brought that in for the park board and it was a good conversation about needs or, you know, future challenges and that kind of stuff. That's cool.
I don't have anything to report.
Do you?
I'm just going to have to go back to you before I start.
Like after you.
It's like a ping pong.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
At the PUC, the solar work group came with their recommendations that they've been discussing for a while and Jay, you can add to this if there's something that you think that is out of.
I will do my best.
But the, they made three recommendations to the PUC. One, one was that the PUC continue to pursue the arrangement with SIMPA for their solar array that they're building.
Up down by Oatana.
Somewhere.
They're building a great big solar array down by Oatana and, and they're offering certain percentages of that to, to their member, member cities. And, and so, number one is SIM, the, the PUC wants to go for that, like we want to be a part of that, which I think is great.
Yeah, and we, and we offered SIMPA a little bit different arrangement and they seem to be willing to accept that, or maybe they're willing to accept that. or maybe they're willing to accept that, uh, um, we need, we need to, uh, find out if, really if, are, any, any of our, uh, PUC members are interested in, uh, participating in that program. We're gonna be doing some work on that, uh, the next couple of months. The, uh, the second was the consideration for, and this is what, what Jay was talking about is up at the Public Works Garage, that the, uh, the roof was designed with only half the roof having a capacity to, uh, support solar panels. Whereas, uh, the, um, recommendation is we should, we should kind of reserve that, uh, potential to have that whole roof be used for, uh, for solar panels as a city, city-owned, pub- public utility-owned, uh, solar installation. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, I was, right now, thirty to sixty.
Sixty is the max on that.
On that project.
So if you, if you look at that, half of the roof would be sixty kilowatt, so then the whole roof would be a hundred and twenty. But that's a pretty significantly large, um, system, so.
Yeah, but the idea was that we should at least reserve, have that capacity to be able to do that, especially if we could do some simple things to make sure that that roof is designed to, to be able to handle that.
Right.
So.
And that's what his, their engineers are working on, what would that look like for us to retrofit the, the roof joists as they are right now, so that they could hold that additional weight. And, and they are very similar, very similar joists. It's just, you know, the, at the, at the edges, they have to be able to handle additional snow load, um, because the, uh, the solar panels will be a different surface than, than the metal roof that was gonna go on it. So.
Was it surprising that the whole, there was fifty percent plan?
Yeah, I, I was surprised.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was surprised. I thought we kept talking about it the whole time that that was supposed to be the plan.
I thought so, too.
So, who was to pay for that retrofit?
Well, we haven't designed, decided that we're gonna do that, so.
We don't know what it will take or what it will cost.
Sure. I think that was our expectation, and so I'm just wondering where, where that gets.
I agree with that, and I asked that question at the meeting, and it was, it was, it seemed, it seemed to be alluded to the fact that that had never actually been clearly discussed. So that was not a clear expectation, so.
Seems like if you do half of them, I mean.
It's a strange decision. I don't think we understand the, the reasoning for it.
Yeah.
I, I'm sure there is reasoning for it. If you'd like an explanation, we can have the architects provide one.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, you know, I mean, if all of a sudden it's a, whatever it is, right? It's interesting, it'll be interesting to see what they say the retrofit is.
I'm drawing a blank on what the third recommendation was, uh.
We're not gonna do it, so it's not important.
Yeah, that's why I brought it back.
The third recommendation would be to have a community solar, like a community solar garden. And the community solar garden, yeah, that option is, at this point, is not fine, it's not viable.
It's not economically viable.
Nor is the solar panels on the roof at all affordable in conclusion.
Yeah.
If that decision's really based on some further discussions that we are having right now with SIMPA. As a matter of fact, I believe George went down to Fairmont, Minnesota for the SIMPA meeting today to talk about that, so. There, there's more to, to discover on that.
Yeah, and it's, I think it's pretty important that we, as a community, continue to, to communicate with, um, continue to communicate with SIMPA, our intentions and, and the desires of our community to, to continue to grow and pursue solar on our own. Because it sounds like that impact that we have by continuously bringing these, these, these conversations to them is, is starting to have their, like, their, their board is starting to consider those things more, more realistically. And so I think that it's really important for us to keep having those conversations. A fair number of those small towns in southern Minnesota that, that, um, that are members of SIMPA are, you know, they're prime for solar. They've got big open spaces that are sunbaked, you know, sunbaked most of the time. And, and some of those communities down there, down by like the New Richmond area, or New Richland area, are fantastic wind areas, so, you know, this, the renewables and SIMPA can get along really well. Maybe we just need to continue that conversation, so.
Of course, we are significant wind customers already through SIMPA.
Right.
So.
Anything else?
Uh, just, just to say that the, the, the work that the solar, uh, committee did, uh, was really, really, I think, helpful and beneficial to the, to PUC. I mean, we've been evaluating and talking about, uh, solar and a lot of different contexts for probably two years, and, you know, the, the, the analysis that they did, uh, I think was really helpful, and, you know, even though there's still, still a lot of variables and unknowns that, uh, you know, we need, we need to have better understanding before we move forward. You know, I think we're getting a better grasp of what seems to be viable and what might not be viable, and, um, I, I think brings us closer to, to a point of being able to, to make a decision and do some, do something. So it's much appreciated, uh, the work that they've done. The other is that, uh, Mike and Jay and I had, uh, a meeting with, uh, Mindot, uh, district engineer about Highway sixty-one project, and, you know, I'm not sure if it was a fruitful conversation, I think it was. You know, we talked about some of the concerns and issues that, you know, we've raised, uh, and where the process is at, and how this, uh, you know, is, is playing out, and the importance of this project for the city, and, um, you know, I think the district engineer came away with at least, I think, an understanding of, uh, our concerns, uh, you know. I left before the end, so I don't know what the final outcome was, uh, what the takeaway from, from that was, and, you know, maybe Mike, uh, you can relay that information, but, uh, I mean, I thought that it was good to have the conversation. I think it was good for the district engineer to understand, um, the, the questions that we still have and how we get the answers that we might want, uh, before the project gets to be put into some kind of a form that we can go back on, and, you know, I think he's trying to understand, um, you know, the timeline, how that's putting us under certain pressures to, uh, to, to get, get something finalized, so.
Really, the, the only concrete takeaway was that they will be preparing for us a schedule of when some of the issues that we raised are gonna be addressed in the scope of the project, and some discussion of what resources are going to be available to deal with some of the issues that we raised. Which I don't think is any different than what we asked for in March when we first brought it up. But, we, we went down a path with them as a partner to try and, try a, a particular strategy, and I think that it's worked in some ways and in others it hasn't, and so this is just a circling back and sharing our feedback and trying to improve it still.
So not all good news, but not all bad news?
Yeah, it seemed like there is, it was a mixed bag in that, um, I felt like they really understood where we were coming from and the things that we were requesting. But some of the responses to the, to those requests were basically, like, well, we've gotta do it this way. And, and so that, you know, they, they have some very specific rules, and we can't, you know, we have to, we have to just live with that to a certain extent. But the, but those things that we have to live with are not necessarily design standards. And so those are the things that we keep asking, like, well, let's have, let's actually do a design process then. They said that they wanted to be the, the organization that, that headed up all the design process, so fantastic. I mean, we, we made the request, um, to pay LHB to do, to do a design process so that we could figure out some of the stuff that they're still asking us for, and, and that was, that was turned down, or, or, you know, they just prefer to do it in-house. And that hasn't really worked, so, so, you know, we're, we're gonna hopefully hear from them, you know, some, some timeframes and, and some ways of getting around to making those design processes happen, so. Anything else, Tim?
That's it.
Tracy?
Um, a couple of questions. Uh, maybe you're gonna talk about this anyways, any updates on that Starry Night project through September?
Uh, I, I haven't heard anything, though.
Okay. And then, um, are we gonna still set a joint powers meeting, maybe sometime in the fall, or?
Yeah.
And you guys wanted to talk potty talk?
Well, you better, 'cause Dave isn't gonna talk yet.
You could just wait and get some information later.
Could do that.
I think he was just trying to make you guys really jealous of what you missed, at the potty talk meeting.
Yeah, there was a party.
I'm not asleep until Mike sends me those results. No, I am actually, I'm actually here with you guys.
And you're already asleep.
So.
I was, probably.
I mean, we went over those, the, um, results of the survey, and Mike has a nice little summary sheet on that. I had spent a couple hours before the meeting, one more time, delving into websites of places that provide either permanent and/or maybe seasonal or temporary structures, found quite a few. So I'll send those links through and Mike can distribute them. I mean, there's every option available. And, you know, we talked earlier about where do you get designs for some of these, like the ones we like that the state or the feds have? Well, yeah, I found the company that does that, and you can see where they do all the contracts, and they've got it all set out. There, there's a lot of them that work with municipalities, they've got in-house, you know, funding options. I mean, they're just used to that. They sell new, they sell used. You can lease. You can do a, a pump out that's permanent and/or movable. You can do a, first of all. You could do no lighting and no hand washing, or their designs will incorporate that and still no toilet flushing, but, I mean, it just, any possible, if you want it so, you want it lead, anything you want, they do. And so there's lots of things to think about for maybe having one or two permanent structures and having some seasonal ones. Maybe leasing some space around town to fill that concept of having them sort of dispersed around, whatever. So there's lots of things we could think about when we want, and lots of ideas even within that survey of amenities we might want, or not, we'd have to decide, but things to think about that people have mentioned, you know, maybe let's have a bike station by them. Maybe it'd be nice to have a table or something where people are waiting in a group while they wait for whatever. Diaper stations are kind of an obvious and whatever, but anyways, so that's the kind of thing we went over, right?
Sounds right.
That's it.
So we'll have another potty talk meeting, and you guys can all show up.
Sounds good.
Yeah. That's it?
Yeah, I, I, I have to say, I'm really, I don't know if I sound negative, but I'm very encouraged about what we can do to, uh, set forth something really great with North House. I just think we really need to spell it out and make everything. As I used to say, the legislative history should be documented.
Do you always say that?
No.
I don't think I've ever seen, heard you say that.
'Cause that expression doesn't work when you don't want longer work in law offices. But it used to be when I used to have to do that a lot.
Fair enough. Now I've heard you say it. Okay, you, this is great because you guys have taken care of most of the conversations that I was hoping to have, so.
Up we're after Mar.
I've talked about the construction meeting, we talked about the potty talk, we talked about the Department of Transportation meeting. Uh, I did some very important mayoral duties during Fish Pick, um, ate the first fish burger. First fish burger of the year, man. I had to, like, push, um, hack it down, um, so that, uh, Dairy Queen, because he got, he almost got one in front of me. Like, this ain't not gonna happen.
Move the town and run for office, buddy, right?
Yeah.
He's a big guy, too, it took a lot of pushing.
You did the dunk tank?
And then I did the dunk tank.
Shoot, get a lot of business?
You didn't get down there? Uh, there was a fair amount of business. Um, I didn't get a dunked a single time by an adult. It was all kids. So, they, they put down some serious change, change to put me in there.
All your employees?
And then, no, not me. They were working.
I was thinking it was probably runners that tired your coach.
That, that was some of them, some of them, but they're runners, so they can't throw a ball.
That's right. They're lucky.
That's why we run.
That's why I run. I, I had, have been sitting down with, um, with the Soil and Water crew, uh, to, you know, just talk through some op- options for putting together some funding to, to redo the stormwater plan for the city, uh, that I think is gonna be on our next meeting's agenda. There's some good opportunities out there, some of them are kind of complex. But I think that we can get, uh, we can get enough funding to redo that plan and to potentially have some money to work on some projects as well. So that, I think, is pretty exciting. Yeah, that's all I had.
Oh, wait a minute, one more question then.
Uh-oh.
Um, the, the steering group for the, the community.
Visioning.
Thank you. Any updates?
Are you, are you finished? Turn it over?
I was gonna turn it over to Mike.
Perfect segue. Uh, I would've put this in writing for you, but it was just today that I had this conversation with our consultants down at Community Design Group. There's eighteen local organizations of the, I don't remember how many, we ended up sending an invitation to.
Eighty?
Seventy, seventy-five, eighty. It was in that significant number that have gotten back to us or have indicated that they will. We, we talked about closing it this Friday. There might be one or two stragglers that we go and encourage to get involved. The next plan is that they're putting together, and I expect it to be probably done by this week, just a quick update on the website of where we're at in the process and what's coming up next, that we'll share with the community and with you, but also with the steering committee. And then they're, they're putting the content together, so, based on the input that we've received initially, based on the conversations we've had since then, and then based on this last effort to get hopefully existing content that we can borrow from active organizations, they're gonna develop a draft that they'll have for us in early September. And then after that, we'll be working through the steering committee, but also the organizations that did participate in this last effort to look at the draft. And do they recognize their input? Does it say the things they expect? What are we missing? That kind of a check on the draft that we'll be doing in September. And we'll be looking at then, late September, early October, to actually do the, uh, public process to amend the comprehensive plan based on what we've got. So, a lot of work has happened in small interactions over a period of a year now that has gotten us to a point where the consultants have what they need to really start drafting content for us. It'll happen fast now, we'll start to see real content. People will get an idea of how all the pieces work together, and it'll be incumbent on us to then look it over and figure out, well, okay, what are we missing?
So is it, do they feel pretty good about, in perspective against other projects they work on? Do they feel like we've done a pretty good job of, of getting input?
Yeah, they certainly do. The, I think we've been a real challenge to work with, that they've kind of looked forward to and have been excited to do because of the, we've tried to be innovative or different, and we've tried to be real fine-grained and got, get out to a large number of people for a community our size, and so I think that that's worked pretty well, and I think just the fact that we're so short on our own resources here to help that process move quickly has been a bit of a frustration. But otherwise, uh, they're really very satisfied and excited about being able to put the content together for us now, based on all this input that we've received, so. Yeah, it's, it's a good place, I think, we're in.
Cool. Anything else?
Boy, I think you probably covered all the stuff that I wanted to bring up, so.
Super.
When, when, when do you think it might be a good time to talk about, um, the, the staffing?
Monday. Budget.
We have, we have a budget work session on the fourteenth.
I mean, is that, do you know what I'm talking about, as far as reorganizing?
Yeah, yeah, that's why I wanted to talk to you, bud.
Yep. Alright, closing comments?
Do we have to have another one about other stuff?
I don't think so.
Monday at twelve-thirty, right?
Yeah.
Yep, party's up.
No onions.
Are you really getting a party?
No, probably not.
Okay. I'm, I'm kinda eating before.
I don't know, we could, you wanna get one?
Sure.
Alright, um, no onions. We're adjourned. I just had to do it.
Thank you.
No onions.
Thanks, Chris.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, guys.
Dennis for lunch on Monday.